If you'll please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have minutes for January 21st, January 30th, February 6th, and February 13th. Everybody should have reviewed those already. Were there any comments as to any changes, accuracy?
Yes, Madam Chair, the comments from me on the January 30th meeting, there's a, because this, I understand why, but there's a bunch of typos in here. Ms. Lathrop is referred to as a number of other words that begin with L. So, stuff like that.
Lovely.
It's pretty clear when you read it who I meant, but it's very much captured like word for word. So, I just don't know if we need to correct it or not, but I think most people would read it and understand who I was talking about. But, and there's a place where the word "as" appears three times in a row, there's stuff like that. So...
So, we can have that cleaned up.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to take a tour through that, but I can't do it in two seconds, right? It's, I need a few minutes to do that. So, I don't know if we want to do that now, or...
I'm just trying to see where you're seeing it, so I have a better idea. So, I just want to look, because I know they were gone back over, so I...
Oh, maybe these are revised since the version I saw? Because I'm not spotting it right now, actually.
Okay, I see a couple.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Page, like, page six, there's a number of things like that. It's not substantive, it's all, you know, like, just...
All right, so we can have those amended, so the...
Just to correct those sorts of things.
Yes. To correct the spelling errors.
The obvious spelling errors.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Is everybody comfortable taking them all together? Well, let's take, I want to take these January 30th separate, so we can say we're amending those slightly.
Yeah, okay.
But, we'll go ahead. Do I have a motion to approve the January 21st, February 6th, and February 13th?
So, I'll move that we accept February, January, what was it, January?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, February 6th, and February 13th minutes as printed here.
Seconded.
Any other discussion? All right. Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, approved. All right. Do I have a motion then for the January 30th with the spelling errors?
Corrected.
Corrected.
So, I move that we, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the January 30th minutes amended for spelling errors.
Seconded.
Any other discussion? Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to grants. We have one grant.
We have one grant this evening. Our librarians, our elementary librarians received the Massachusetts Board of Library Commission's Explore Grant in the amount of $4,000 that they will be used to purchase books for the libraries.
All right. Any questions on this grant?
Can you briefly, can I ask this, Superintendent, can you briefly explain what an Explore Grant is?
The Explore Grant is primarily to purchase books that will continue to provide for diverse books in the library, perhaps some books in languages that our students speak, and to explore different options. Our librarians have done a great job this year. This is the second grant that they've written and received to add to their collections.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll move that we accept the Massachusetts Library Explore Grant.
Seconded.
Any other discussion? All right. Well, I just want to say a brief thank you. I know it's a lot of work to apply for these grants, and it's always exciting when we get them. So, appreciate the efforts of our librarians of making this such a diligent effort and priority to be able to get these grants for our students. Thank you. Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are going to move on to our student representative report. We have one with us tonight. Leene, would you like to give us an update?
Starting off, the mock trial team on playoffs and will be moving on to the Elite Eight trials. Student Council is currently attending the Massachusetts Association of Student Council State Conference where Ally is running for president, and that's why we don't have Harper and CC and Ally today. But, best of luck to them. And then, next week is Night's Care Week. The days are night's care about themselves, the future, the community, inclusivity, and each other. Friday is the pep rally, where the dance team and color guard are performing, as well as the teacher versus student basketball game. Future Medical Professionals Club is having a speaker next Thursday. And then, a note on the Anne Bradstreet Poetry Competition. Naturally, that's a town event, but it was discussed in the Creative Writing Club, so that club plans on sending submissions, and Ms. Holman did mention it in her last update. So, she's, like, encouraged students to apply or put in poetry. So, if any students are watching this, like, please go ahead. And then, robotics, there was a robotics state tournament. So, Team C got second in the tournament, and then, second in skills overall. And then, the Drama Festival One Act Play was February 27th. And the 28th, our guild competed in the preliminary round at St. John's Prep on March 1st. The One Act Play was February 27th, 20th, and our guild competed in the preliminary round at St. John's Prep on March 1st, and moved on with three other schools. The next round of competition is the 15th at North Reading High School. And then, Harper would like us to know that everyone is super excited to be moving on and wishes she was here to explain because it's super cool, especially as it's our first ever year competing. So, naturally, you can tell that my associates also put in some of these notes.
When is that, when is that tape? The Drama Guild, the second round?
The second round, the 15th at North Reading High School.
Thank you.
I saw the performance that the Drama Guild did at the high school. I think they did two nights or three nights last week, and it was amazing. Harper obviously was in there, but the students, it was written by a North Andover student, the play, you know, places people. It was worth, it was highly entertaining. I took my daughter, and everybody was laughing. It hit all the notes, adults and kids and humor. It was an amazing job.
Sweet. The freshman sophomore semi-formal is March 7th. March 3rd, the class of 2028 had their Chipotle fundraiser. And the Knights Locker is accepting prom dresses as well as other clothes, but especially prom dresses because the prom season is coming close. And then, there was Coffee House at the school today. So, that's a little event where some of the, like, the choir and the band, they all perform. And then, it's very chill and calm place to be. And then, SAT testing Saturday. So, our school will be a place of testing, and lots and lots of juniors will be there testing, myself included. So, that's it.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
For the Knights Closet for Prom Dresses, where can people drop them off? And are there any criteria of what they're looking for?
Oh, I'm not sure. It doesn't say where we can drop them off, but Ms. Holman did have it in the last update. She mentioned that. And then, I don't believe there's any specific criteria. I feel like we'd appreciate most prom dresses. And, yep.
Thank you. Any other comments? I have one more question. So, the students versus teachers' basketball game, is that with the basketball team, or do other students sign up for that? How does that work?
So, usually, students can sign up for that. It's not really just the basketball team. No offense to the teachers, but I feel like that might be a blowout.
Oh, you may be underestimating that.
Maybe, maybe I am, maybe I am. But, it's usually pretty entertaining, so I'm looking forward to that.
Sounds like a lot of fun. Can't wait to hear how it turns out. All right, we're going to move into our public comment section of the meeting. First off, I want to note that we do only have one public comment for this meeting, so there's not one at the end of this meeting. This is the one time that we will have this during this meeting. We have currently allotted 30 ti, or 30 minutes for this. Once again, you have three minutes. Ms. Cormier will keep time. Remember to direct comments to the chair and to state your name and address before speaking.
Thank you. So, I'll keep time, three minutes. The alarm will go off, and I will interrupt and ask you to wrap up your thought, so we can move on. Thank you.
All right, it's now open.
Hi, Tony Delmonico. I live in Amesbury, Massachusetts, and I work at North Andover High School. Thank you, Madam Chair and Committee. Sixty-eight point two is not a number I will advocate for, simply because it is not enough, and is not the number that Superintendent Lathrop says we need to maintain what we have now, which frankly is inadequate. Quick story, I grew up here in the 80s and 90s. In 93, my father took a second job. My mother went back to work, and they sent me to private school. I'm proud to teach at North Andover High School, and I believe in the work that we do. But, over the last two months, I've had some clarity as to why my parents did just that, because it was not easy for us. In January, I had the pleasure of meeting Diane Huster, a former school committee member who shared with me the dark history of the underfunding of North Andover Public Schools. In 1991, as I was graduating Kittredge School, tremendous cuts in the district, hit the district, and my parents knew that I would not have the support to grow as a student. I have no doubt that there's parents in this room and watching at home with the same thought. The ramification of those cuts were felt well into the 2000s and even beyond my hiring date of 2006. As a school committee, it is your elected duty to fight for the educators and students of North Andover. But, over the last two months, this is what I've seen. One, you've asserted repeatedly that the last administration was corrupt in their spending, yet we currently face a deficit this year in excess of well over $3 million. There are no hidden bills, there is no closet filled with money. So, my conclusion is simply that we are not, have not, committed enough to our schools. Many of you have repeated the claim that the teachers were told this year there would be cuts if we continued to fight for a contract, one which we settled for less than the average of comparable districts. Those of you who peddled this were not in office during that time, and I thank those of you who have publicly refuted these claims. I was present for all those meetings, and you were not. Three, nothing has been said to acknowledge the rippling effects preemptive closing of the Kittredge School have. In fact, those outside of the Kittredge community were not even made aware of it, the result of which has pitted schools against schools, dividing the parent's support, and a negative narrative suggesting that Kittredge families have had it good for so long at the expense of resources. Not a good look for a committee charged with advocating for students in schools. Lastly, you voted on...
I'm sorry, Mr. Delmonico, if you could please start wrapping up your final comment? Thank you.
Lastly, you voted on budget without even knowing what the loss would be, arguing that the town manager, who for the record is not in charge of the schools, would look favorably upon it, months of debating, commiserating on how difficult it is to choose, and ultimately decided, not unanimously, for a budget number sight unseen.
Is that the three minutes?
In closing, May 13 is the town meeting. I encourage all parents to attend. This is not over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shannon Gately, 40 Phillips Road. Before I start, no one asked, but can I give our high school student a compliment?
Oh, please.
You did a great job. That was terrific. So, I just wanted to say nicely done. Okay, so, today, I'm here to remind you, in case you forgot, some of the many questions that you have all been asked and we're still waiting for the answers to. Have you found the percentage of town residents that utilize the schools? On the blue and purple budget proposal slides, there were no cuts to special ed. And last night, Pam was saying that we can't rule out cuts to special ed. So, which one is it? And what would those special ed's cuts look like? I mean, because I'm sure that you wouldn't want to be hit with several lawsuits that would cost you more money than keeping Kittredge open. What is the plan if the debt exclusion doesn't pass? Many of us have gone over the budget line by line. Have you? Because, I mean, otherwise, you're making decisions without having all the facts. Have you ever figured out how many of the students don't actually live in town? Why does the new Kittredge plan put an emphasis on smaller classes, and you care there, but not now? Okay, I'll answer that one. It's because it suits your current needs and not our children's. Why did you say it was unsafe and that you don't feel comfortable with kids in school during construction while the Kittredge Building Project Plan clearly states, and they quote, "The above strategies are utilized on the current North Andover Middle School additions renovation project, on the past Thompson Elementary School project, the Sargent Elementary School project, and the North Andover High School project, as well as a multitude of other school projects on owner-occupied sites." "These strategies all play a role in making it possible to safely execute on school construction progress while the site is owner-occupied," unquote. And you previously said that it would be highly unlikely to have an override and a debt exclusion passed in one year. But, last night, you said it was a possibility. So, please stop saying that you have a plan. You don't. If you can't answer a majority of questions that are asked, and the ones that you do answer are usually with "it depends," then you don't have a plan. You're winging it, which is clear to see. I imagine this wouldn't fly in your jobs, so why is it acceptable here? You are responsible for our children's future, their education, and you're failing massively. You should have a three-year plan, where you have certainty and answers of what the next two years look like and are able to address any concerns that come your way, while year three could be a bit more fluid because unknowns happen and things like that. But, you have a guideline.
Excuse me, Ms. Gately, I'm sorry, if you could just wrap up your last sentence, thank you.
And you talk as though our kids are dollar signs and not vulnerable young human beings. You care that you say about our kids, then show it. Because honestly, you can't say that sixty-eight point two is what they deserve, when in actuality, in the beginning, you said that seventy-one was lower than they deserve. This town has the money, and you know it. So, do what's right and do what's best for our kids and for this town. Thank you.
David Evangelista, 28 Morningside Lane. I want to start by saying the events which have transpired over the last few weeks are not only concerning, but completely erode the trust of parents and teachers that you would maybe be able to do possibly the right thing. Unfortunately, we are here today because you, as a committee, have already failed at one of your most important roles, which is the oversight of school administration. Granted, it would be the previous administration, but still, here we are. To hastily attempt to correct this failure with potentially seismic disaster, one which would likely reverberate for many years. In the last two months, your statements have been inconsistent at best, confusing a lot of parents and others. Through various channels, whether it be at meetings, within individual communication, during smaller group meetings, you have highlighted your stances on the budget and associated matters, only to shift in waiver. Many of you have stated you cannot see a positive path forward without a level service budget. You then shifted to a lesser budget, and the last meeting unveiled a essentially never seen, never seen before budget, at least for public view and discussion, and swiftly voted it forward. It's become so confusing to follow, we as a community do not know where we stand, nor do we have an accurate information with which to vote at town meeting. Ms. Lathrop, you have stated at meetings within individual...
Please direct comments to me, not to them.
I'm sorry, okay.
Thank you.
It has been stated in individual meetings and communication, emails and such, that parent, that students would be accommodated for, depending on which school they would be transferred to. Now, that is being questioned, so we're not sure about that. Parents are paying close attention to this. And also, in the current survey that went out regarding the rebuilding of the new school, the first bullet point, comments about the importance of class size. But, it has been repeatedly stated during these meetings that class size doesn't seem to matter so much. So, which is it? We don't really know. If class size is not so much of an issue, then why bother reducing it if, when we build a new school? There's also a growing narrative in this town, which I don't personally necessarily agree with, but that there's corruption amongst all the boards and other officials, that we have plenty of money, but somehow, we're not able to pay for our services in schools. But, this narrative serves as a major barrier to those of us advocating for our kids and our schools and an appropriate budget that adequately serves all of our needs in students, teachers, and staff. And your actions and behaviors in the last few months have only caused this narrative to grow. So, the question is, what if your plan fails? What if your plan, what's your plan if the debt exclusion doesn't get approved, which effectively ends public funding for a new school? The domino effect would be enormous, and good leaders have...
Excuse me, Mr. Evangelista, if you could wrap up. Thank you.
Leaders have outlook plans. I'll repeat what Shannon said. It, you know, you need to look into the future, you need to be able to project. So, what's the plan if this one fails? We need to be prepared for that. And allow me to end this by asking one simple question. Do you support the kids, the teachers, the parents, or are you solely acting as a hand of the town management and select board? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mandy Amassagie. I live in Methuen, and I'm currently a first grade teacher at Atkinson. I'm proud to say that I'm in my 18th year of teaching here in North Andover and in my 30th year of teaching overall. I realize that when we are discussing the school budget, our focus is on the dollars and where they come from. But, I'm here to remind you of the students and also the teachers that should be considered in determining the budget, not simply the line items on a spreadsheet. I trust that you all have high hopes for all of our students, but we, the educators, cannot meet all of their needs without the financial support of a level services budget. This town has historically spent very little on their students. Just look at the per pupil figures that keep being brought up at these meetings. This town also wonders why we face such considerable budget deficits. I believe these two things go hand in hand. Low per pupil expenditures actually cause budget deficits. In my 30 years of teaching, I find these students to be the neediest I have ever had, and you are telling me I'll have to do more with less. This is not feasible or possible. You want me to use high-quality instructional materials, but you're unwilling to fund them entirely. You expect my pacing and coverage of curriculum to be impeccable, yet you say it's fine to add more students to my classroom. Covering material is not the same thing as teaching students. Perhaps you lack the comprehension of the needs of today's students. Your budget certainly seems to reflect this. You do not wish to provide educators with the means to meet the actual needs of the students. This formula will not provide high-quality educational outcomes, unfortunately. North Andover needs to figure out a way to make the students their priority when it comes to setting a school budget. I ask that you change the narrative. North Andover students deserve a high-quality education, and we are willing to advocate for them. I urge you to put the students and their needs first, and then work to make the dollars available. As the school committee, this should be your first priority, to have conviction, to advocate for the schools, and to demand the means to do so. Thank you.
Nadia Chinchilla, 64, White Bridge Lane. So, my first school meeting, school committee meeting, after I heard that Kittredge might close, I came here not intending to speak, but I was so bothered by the lack of communication that went out to the entire district that I decided to speak up. During that meeting, I specifically said, "I think the communication to the North Andover District was not clear in what the budget cuts mean for all of the students." I've asked multiple times during private meetings and during public meetings that the communication be better. I started to actually wonder if this is the kind of communication that's acceptable. So, I went, because we're not the only school district dealing with this, and I looked at various other school pages. The superintendent pages for the schools like Andover have communication that has gone out, that has said, "This is the budget presentation I gave to the school committee. These are the budgets we're facing. I encourage you to come to the meeting." Where is that communication from the North Andover School Committee or the North Andover Superintendent? If you did that, more parents might be aware of what the cuts actually mean. I ask you to please, if you really believe in transparency, that's a very small thing that you can do. If you're not afraid of the information, make sure that the information gets circulated. My second point. I hear a lot about equity. We're going to make things equitable. I hardly have ever used or heard the word equity to mean the opposite of that. But, you make it sound like Kittredge has had it too good. Their classrooms have been so small that it's time that they're stuck in bigger classrooms. I heard a school committee member say, "Well, my kids have never had a classroom that small." Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but does that mean that my kid, my kid at Kittredge, who has been in small classrooms, now deserves the same treatment your kid has had? No. We should be doing the opposite. Let's try to make the classrooms smaller for all the kids. Why? Because we know that smaller classrooms are better. Despite whatever research you try to put in front of us, there's five other statistics, research studies that say the opposite. Lastly, I'm going to say to the parents who are watching online, you still have the power to demand more from the school committee. This is not over. We know that the town has the money. You can demand more. You can show up at town meeting and make sure that the school committee, or actually the town, funds the school properly. They're not doing it for your kids, so we're going to have to do it for them. Thank you.
Erin Harris, 135 Stevens Street. Today, what I want to focus on is how we got here today, because right now, we have a plan for next year that is driven essentially by the numbers. It's not driven by the needs of the students. When I've gone to the tri-board meeting and other meetings in town, what I've heard the other boards look to you for is your expertise. And they've said, "You are the experts." They want you to tell them what you need as the experts when it comes to education. So, as we move forward in this process and looking to next year, I don't want you to be driven by the numbers solely. Look at where we want to be. We have said that, you've said that you can meet the needs of the students, but the needs of the students are on a spectrum. The path we are on with sixty-eight point two is to meet the bare minimum standards of that spectrum, and that is not enough. Tell us, as the experts, what it takes to get them up that curve, to be where we want to be. Our kids have big dreams. They dream of being astronauts. They dream of being doctors. They dream of so many things. You should dream that for them, too. Dream of a school that helps them get there, and then tell us the plan for doing it. Right now, all we have is sixty-eight point two. I can't even tell my first grader where he's going to school next year. He's heard the rumblings, and I can't tell him where he'll go to school. I can't tell him which of his friends will be at that school with him. I can't tell him if he'll still get to attend lunch bunch where he's working on making new friends, because I don't know if there's going to be a budget for that. One of my favorite children in the world attends the middle school, and Ms. Scribner was his counselor. He's in the foster care system, and this school district is his family. But, his counselor left, and that position... But his counselor left, and that position was not refilled. He's been assigned to someone else now. You have to understand, these kids have great needs, and we have a legal and ethical obligation to fill them. And if we are not meeting them where they are at, we're not doing our job. And right now, we're not meeting these kids post-COVID with all the social emotional issues and the increasing IEPs. We're not meeting them where they're at. So I'm asking you, use your expertise, because you are experts. Don't tell us what you can get by with, or what would be good enough for the bare minimum. Tell us what your dreams are for our kids. Tell us what you hope for. Tell us what you can do if we give you more. Because I haven't heard that. For me to want to give you more, I need to know what you want to do with it. All the great programs you can create for our kids, all the ways in which you can help them succeed and help this town thrive. So I want that from you. Show me your expertise. Put together a plan. Give me your biggest hopes and dreams for this school. Thank you.
Good evening. Juliette Darmon, 32 Carrington Street, Unit 1, North Andover. Teacher at North Andover Mel School and North Andover Teachers Association President. So we have been speaking a lot about the positions that we will be losing next year, but are you aware of the positions that we have already lost this year? That have already impacted all of our students and where everyone has to pick up the slack, for lack of a better word? Doesn't seem like you're saying yes or no, so let me run through the list.
Well, this isn't a question and answer back and forth, but you're welcome to speak.
But you're nodding, so it doesn't seem like you're aware, so-
We don't need to.
Okay. So let me run through the list. All the math coaches at the elementary level, along with the math interventionist, one literacy coach, a part-time science teacher at the high school, a part-time wellness teacher at the high school, one math teacher at the high school, the entire focus program at the middle school, a .6 school psychologist at the middle school, an adjustment counselor for FRIVE program at the middle school, which is a tier-three social-emotional program, a .6 physical therapist, the humanities director that looks at the entire program for the entire district, the special ed administrator at the middle school, the math director for the district, one administrative assistant at central office, and finally, 17 TAs district-wide. So these are all the positions that we have lost and have not been replaced. So I'm aware you have made a budget recommendation, but before putting that number together, I sincerely wish you had looked at the budgets closely, line by line, looked at all the differences between all of them, and also inquired about the position this district has already lost. I thank you for your time.
Helen Picard, 447 Waverly Road. I respectfully request that the Chair, Ms. Koenig, invite Mark Rogers to present a citizen warrant article to the school committee as an agenda item at the soonest possible meeting. This warrant article is fully signed and will be submitted to Town Hall tomorrow. Your understanding and the public understanding of this warrant article can positively impact the budget and student experience. Mr. Rogers formerly served as Chair of the Finance Committee. He's spent a great deal of time examining town figures, and it will be well worth time spent in your deliberations. Thank you.
All right, seeing nobody else coming up, we're going to conclude our public comment portion and move on with the agenda. Thank you for those that came and spoke. It's always appreciated to hear the comments of the public. We're going to move on to recognitions. Ms. Lathrop, I believe you have some recognitions to make.
I do, and I apologize. I'm going to look over the shoulder of Mrs. Ando because the TV's not working, and it's the one time I didn't print out my slides. So we have a variety of recognition. We want to recognize that gymnastics had two North Andover High School student athletes who qualified for the New England Championship. Nellie Goslin for the vault and the floor, and Carla Wong for the bars. The Winter Cheer placed second at the regional meet on Sunday, and they qualified for the state meet this weekend. Girls Hockey is playing Wednesday night in Woburn against Archbishop Williams in the Round Eight of the MIAA tournament. Sidney Rogers was selected the MVC Division One Player of the Year. I'd like to thank Coach, I think they say Dubbs, is that right? John Dubinsky, he was our football coach. He's also a history teacher at North Andover High School. He was a, this is the press release that was sent out, but he has been coaching North Andover High School for the past 10 years and has decided it was time to sit down from that position. So I think it's important that he had announced this earlier, but we haven't had a chance to recognize him yet here at school committee. The, this is a little bit of a longer one. The business law mock trial, I think we heard a little bit about that. But they, just to give you a little bit more background, they were one of 28, there were one of 28 remaining schools in the state that competed in the single-elimination mock trial at Clark University on Sunday. After winning the trial and advocating, and advancing to the Fab 14, they won their second trial to qualify for the Elite Eight. As one of the eight remaining teams left in the state, they will compete Thursday, March 12th, at the Boston Courthouse with the opportunity to advance to the Final Four. If they advance to the Final Four, they will compete again later on in the day with a chance to advance to the finals, which will be held at Boston Public Library on March 21st. Just, I can say, last year I had the opportunity to see them when they were presenting at Lawrence Court. And they're just amazing. Danny Oldenlander is the teacher who oversees this. And if you walked in, you wouldn't, honestly, I think that a common person walking in would not know that these were students that were presenting to a judge. It's just amazing. We'd also like to recognize Angela Hung for her acceptance to the Fourth Annual High School Art Exhibit at UMass Lowell. Angela's piece titled Cannon vs. Nikon will be on display from March 20th to 27th at the university gallery. The award ceremony will be held on March 27th at 7:00 PM with a reception to follow, and that's her piece. We want to congratulate Chris Nelson. He's a North Andover middle school music teacher. He received the MMEA Lowell Manson Award. The Lowell Manson Award is presented annual to MMEA members who have demonstrated leadership in music education in Massachusetts, contributing significantly to music and music education with at least 15 years of experience as a music director. And there's a picture of Chris. Oh, it's working! And then lastly, I want to take a moment to recognize Luanne Hogan for her service to North Andover and for her great care for our students and for their safety. Sadly, Luanne was one of, she was a crossing guard at Kittredge School there for many, many years. She lost her battle this week and passed away. And so we recognize her. If you've ever come up that street, what's that? Oscar, nowhere I live. Oscar Street. At that, that crossing over to Kittredge. She was there for so many years. And my own personal story about her is that I didn't, I didn't work in North Andover, but I would pass by that street every day. I'd go to that stop sign on my way to my job. And she got to know my car and who I was in the time I was there. And she would wave to me every single day, not having a clue as to who I was, but just knew that my car went through there. Just a remarkable person. So we want to thank her for her service and just take a moment to recognize her life. Thank you. So that's our recognition.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just give a shout out to Mr. Nelson, who is a fantastic, is a fantastic middle school music teacher who handles some kids like mine, who were not the easiest students. And for that, and he's a remarkable guy. And I had the pleasure to see him perform, actually, recently in a non-school function way, and he's a terrific musician. So it's great to see him get that award, just personally.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do any of the committee members have any roundtable reports? Anything that they want to report on from the community? Do we have any upcoming NACS or community events?
Other than the ones that were mentioned tonight, I don't have any other list to share. Trying to think if there's anything else.
I know we have the sweetheart dances coming up for these schools, which is always a fun experience for those students to bring somebody special in their life, to be able to dance and have fun. Always great events for our students and for their special someone. And I believe it is, the 22nd is kindergarten and first grade, and I believe the 29th is-
Second and third.
Yes. And then they also have, okay, and then they have fourth and, I know there's 22nd and 29th, but I believe you can find, there's a website to buy tickets if you haven't bought your tickets yet. Always a very fun event.
I do have one. Coming up is kindergarten registration. That will be going out through all of our newsletters, and there'll be an opportunity to register for kindergarten. And then Dr. Goddard will be sharing in, sort of an open house event at North Andover Middle School, giving parents an opportunity to hear more about the kindergarten experience.
So 28th is fourth and fifth. It was a Friday night. Okay, I remembered. All right. School community chats. We had one on March 1st, and Ms. Cormier was there. Do you want to give us a little update on how that went?
Yeah, I was there with Mr. Brown as well. We had about 12 people attend, and we were there for roughly two and a half hours.
Yep, two and a half hours.
Lots of just kind of questions and discussions. Mr. Brown, you've got your stack over there. Do you want to, you're eager, do you want to take over?
I'm known for taking copious notes. Yes. It was good, good feedback and I think good interaction. There are a couple of takeaways from that that I just wanted to announce. One of which I feel is a great idea. It's something that's kind of been percolating around my head for a while, anyway. We've been, as a committee, very buried in the, in the crisis of the moment for the past year, not, you know. And the suggestion was made that we consider forming a long-range planning subcommittee or something to that effect. That wasn't exactly what was stated, but that's my interpretation of it. And it's something I'll propose at the appropriate time for us to consider. But I do think there is something to be said for that, that we have a, you know, at least an attempt at a three-to-five-year plan. It's good organizational structure methodology, anyway. So that was one of the big takeaways. You know, a lot of the discussion was, you know, around the budget, naturally. I don't think I need to repeat the details of that, but, you know, there were some good ideas that came out about, you know, looking at other, other sources of revenue, right? Suggestions, for example, that we maybe raise our fees even more, stuff like that. So I can provide a summary, you know, for the superintendent of the details of that. But I do think it was good, a good session. I think the folks that were there were clearly engaged. It was a great opportunity for us to actually be able to answer questions to the best of our ability, speaking as individuals, because that's all we can do, right? We can't speak for the committee. But I do think it's good that we do that. I think folks should definitely take advantage of it whenever they can. A few faces here were there that day, and it was, I think I've hit, I've hit most of the highlights. You know, suggestions, like, can we get more out of Amazon? It's always on my mind, right? Can we get more out of Amazon? Sure, I'd like to. Pursuing that is not as easy as it may sound. You know, I guess the only other specific thing I want to mention, you know, sort of the people that were there were challenging us. You know, can we find some cheaper outplacement alternatives for special ed? Because that is a costly item. And what could we do ourselves? Could we, you know, are there other options? Something to think about, right? That was another key takeaway for me.
All right, thank you. And we, when is our next one?
So our next one is not until June 7th. When we scheduled all these, it was kind of a different time. We weren't getting the participation that we are now. So I don't know if we want to consider scheduling some more.
Yes, I think we should consider scheduling more. So we'll have Michelle put together some additional dates so that we can get some more on the books and get some more community dialogue.
I think we keep doing them as long as people keep attending, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, great. All right, we're going to move into our superintendent central office updates we have around the district.
All right. So today's cover photo is just some fun photos of some of the things that have been happening around the district. Next time, at the next school committee meeting, you're going to hear a lot more about the two pictures on the sort of upper-left and upper-right, but North Andover Middle School teacher and students won the mascot competition for naming the snowplow, and they came here. So you'll have an opportunity. They're going to come and talk about that and how they chose the name and share a little bit more with you. But the upper-left picture, if you can't see, that's our principal Gonzales driving the snowplow or attempting to. And the other one shows the name that they chose that they won for. And then down at the bottom-left is Thompson School students. They had a fun activity where the students had an opportunity to have their own little Thompson tiger and to stuff it. And then the mascot came, so there's a picture there. The picture following that where it looks a little messy. Teachers took a pie in the face to encourage students for their reading. And that's, if you start there, that's the assistant principal and teachers, and all the way down the end of the line is the principal. So everybody participated in that activity. The picture with the bulldog is from the ABECC. They had their RACE Assembly this week, and they're working on service. And the bulldog came to see the students. And then the last picture was I had the opportunity to go to Franklin School and take a little selfie with the students that I read to during Read Across America. So I just thought it's nice to see some of the positive things and just some of the fun that's happening. Before I-
Can I interrupt? Because there was one thing, too. The kindergarten also had their program, their music and art program, which was absolutely amazing. And the music teacher and the art teacher and Dr. Goddard put on a terrific program for each of the students. They did, I believe they did about three to four classes at a time at different dates and times, but it was, it was amazing and put a lot of hard work into that, so I just wanted to throw that in there.
Excellent, thank you. And I want to just share, I'm going to go through this report, but I have a couple of things in your packet that are not part of my superintendent's report, just so that there, that you know. One is a letter to North Andover families about the school budget, the process. I'm just giving that to you to be able to see first. You should have that. Talks about how we got here and moving forward. That's just FYI for you. And then also in your packet is a letter that I will have to submit to the Department of Education with the closure of the Kittredge School, just so that you understand that that letter will go forward to the Department of Education. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that those two things were in your budget, but not part of the presentation. Oh, and then thirdly, I want to let you know that we have hired a new football coach. That's not part of my presentation, but Matt Cerriello? Cerlo? Cerulo will be taking on that position. He has extensive experience as a football coach. He is excited to be part of the community, can't wait to get started, has a connection with us already, and we're really excited. And I heard some great stories about him yesterday. They were talking about when he came for his interview. He made sure that he knew who he was going to be meeting with and that he had found some facts about all the people in the room, and he shared them. And he had a great one about our high school principal. So maybe someday we'll be able to share that with you. Okay, moving on, just to let you know some of the things that have been happening. So as you know, I have a mentor through MAS. I meet with him. I had a meeting with him during this time. I also had the opportunity to go to North Andover Middle School when they did the snowplow. It was that one day that actually started to snow around here and then quickly turned to rain. So the students were real troopers, being outside in the rain when that happened. On February 18th, I met with the North Andover Education Association. We have talked a little bit about this, about this association that does exist. The person who's currently serving as the president came forward. We had a great meeting, talking about what that group does, how they've used money in the past to be able to support North Andover Public Schools, and a resurgence of that group. So it was a really wonderful first meeting. On February 26th, our elementary schools had their middle-of-the-year data meetings to analyze their benchmark data, determine their groups for the next six period, next six-week period. On March 3rd, we had our principal- On March 3rd, we had our principal learning arc. Something that we centered around was an article called "Inclusion is Critical." It's by Shelley Moore. I have a little picture there of her book. And then we use the D cap to look at the physical spaces in our buildings and to look at our physical spaces, and are they creating safe spaces for every community member? That's a picture of the North Andover D cap. This PowerPoint will be linked afterwards. I actually put a hot link in there so that you can go to the D cap. We did upgrade, update our D cap. That's our district curriculum accommodation plan. That's accessible to all students and families. We'll make sure that principals also push out. They share that usually in their newsletters with families, but that's there for you. Also on March 3rd, we had a kindergarten, a planning meeting for a kindergarten presentation at Temple Emmanuel. So a few years ago, actually it's more than a few years ago, when Judy Rogers was the principal at ABECC and I was a principal in Andover, Judy and I had worked together in North Andover, that's how we knew each other. She asked me if I would be interested in co-presenting with her at Temple Emmanuel in Andover. The temple's a preschool, and they invite all other preschools from around North Andover and Andover to Come and families. And Judy and I started doing a presentation on what to expect when your child's moving to kindergarten. I kept it going after Judy sort of moved on, but it was time for me to turn that over. So our coaches, Jen Vitarisi and Jackie Taylor, will be working with Andover Curriculum Coordinator, Moore Donahue, to do that presentation, and it's open to anybody. And they'll just share a little bit about what it means to moving on to kindergarten. It's a great resource. This week, I attended the select board meeting with Mr. Hicks. This whole week, Ms. Ando and I have been meeting, we have been holding budget meetings with all of our leaders, looking at what the budget will look like and what that means to our students. Next, thank you. On March 4th, we had the Kittredge School Building Committee meeting, and I'm sure that Mr. Brown will talk a little bit more about that. I did link in there, the survey link. I think that was mentioned earlier tonight. We encourage all community members, family members, teachers to take, to click on that survey link, to give some feedback. That's the flyer that went out, but also to hear feedback from our families. This week, our schools, our elementary schools are celebrating Read Across America. I had the pleasure, I said earlier, of going to Franklin School. I read Amira's Picture Day. If you don't know that book, Amira is a Muslim student who is so excited that Eid has come. Ramadan has just ended, and Eid is here. And she is going to miss school, like most kids. She's a little excited about having the day off from school. And then she quickly realizes that it's School Picture Day at her school. And she had this beautiful dress planned out for School Picture Day. And now she feels so sad that she's not going to be able to be in her class photo, but it's so important that she goes with her family and celebrates Eid. And throughout the story, she has a wonderful time when she goes to the mosque, and then she had some goodie bags that she was giving to her friends there and they thanked to bring them to the school. And she was a little embarrassed because she was dressed in her traditional clothing. But she gets to school, and her school welcomes her, and her friends welcome her. And she hadn't missed Picture Day. It was the end of the day, and she was able to participate. I had a great conversation with the second graders. It was an opportunity for me to talk to them about school committee policy and why we now have a new policy. So hopefully, no students will have to make that choice about whether or not they're having a celebration with their family or attending Picture Day, because we were going to make sure that we're not scheduling those two things together. But it was really, it was great, and the kids had some wonderful things. And then they went on, so smart, I asked them if they could give me some advice as a superintendent. And they had lots of great things to share. They asked me how many schools I visit, and I shared with them. And one of them said, "I think you should go to Moore." And I thought, "Well, that's great." And it was really great to hear that out of the mouths of students. One also told me I was doing a great job and just continue on, and I thought that was fantastic, too. And then last night, Ms. Koenig and I were able to attend the finance committee meeting. So, sorry, I might have gone on a little bit too long. Okay, I have a budget update for you, too.
FY26 budget update.
Yep. So this probably looks really small, and the committee members, you do have this handout here for you. And, you know, this is a challenging task, so I'm not going to say that it isn't. And there are hard decisions that have to be made, and I'm going to try to walk you through where we are. So what you see on this sheet in front of you and up on the screen is I've shared with you what the level service budget was projected for 2000 FY26. And then the next column shows you what the expenses would be and what the salaries would be for each of those programs with the 62, I mean, $68.2 million budget. And then the next column shows you what the total budget reduction would be for each of those programs. The budget, the column that's titled "Initial Reduction," those are the reductions that we made when we were looking at the 69, or the purple budget, the 69.1 million budget. So those were the original cuts that we made in order to fall within that dollar amount. The next column that says "Additional Reductions," that's the additional amount of money on top of the initial that we'll have, that we are cutting. And it shows you whether or not it's coming from expenses or if it's coming from salaries in each of those programs. And then again, the last column is just a reiteration of the total reduction, which is the same as the budget reduction column. I'm going to talk you through a little bit more of that. So I'll just keep going, and then you can ask questions. So what the next slide shows is the elementary, I mean, the words that are in the black are the original cuts that we made with the 69.1 or the purple budget. And then what's in red would be the additional cuts that are coming, that we'll propose to meet the 68.2. So you see there's, in addition to what we already planned, there'll be another three additional teachers or six teaching assistants at the elementary school. And then a $10,000 reduction from new adoptions.
What is, what's new adoption?
New adoptions is the fund that we use for some of our curriculum.
Oh, okay.
At the middle school, there will be an additional three teachers or six teaching assistants. Class size will most likely look to be between 26 and 28. And there will be a $12,000 reduction to materials and supplies. So that's out of the middle school budget. The high school is also looking at additional three teachers or six teaching assistants. There'll be a $20,000 reduction to athletics. There'll be a $30,000 reduction to the technology summer help. That does leave money in the technology summer help budget in order to support two people supporting technology IT help in the summer. There'll be a $40,000 reduction to materials and supplies in the high school budget and a $10,000 reduction to salaries in our Scarlet Night Academy. And then the additional potential cuts come from special education. We have four teaching assistants who have already shared with us potential resignations and/or retirements. So that's four teaching, those four teaching positions, and then one special education teacher. Something that I shared last night at the finance board was that in the purple budget, we did not make cuts to special education, but this is not the purple budget, so we had to look at all of the cost centers again. And while if we had a... So if you look at one school in particular, if you look at one program, if there was an ability to reduce a special education teacher and still be able to service the students appropriately, we would cut that teacher. If the budget was the purple budget, what I would have done was reassign that teacher to another program, another like building, to be able to continue to meet more needs of students. But in the event that we're cutting this one, it would be cut from a position where we are able to do that and still continue to meet the needs of the students. I'm happy to answer questions.
All right, I'll open it up to the committee for questions.
Superintendent Lethrop, this is not so much a question, just a statement to make sure that I'm clear. So these, so this is looking at the FY26 budget update, the last two slides that you specified through, and kind of tell us what the cuts will be, potential cuts would be. These are, these cuts and this information is given to us to give us guidance on a likely scenario.
Correct, this is a likely scenario.
However, as you dig into this with your leadership team, you may use your judgment for what's best for the students to do something slightly different from this. This is not written in stone, but these are kind of a scenario that gets us...
It's not written in stone, but it is a very likely scenario of what will be the cuts. I mean, it may be that... There may be some slight tweaks, and that does always happen, perhaps. I'll just, I'm just going to give an example. I'm not going to say this has happened, but perhaps at some point we really look at, let's say, I'll say the tier-two teacher at the middle school, and when some of the cuts are made, perhaps it makes sense to keep that position. There may have to be a trade for something else. But, you know, it won't be far off from this, and this is likely the cuts that will have to happen.
Thank you for the extra example. I just don't want anyone to be surprised and say, "If these, you make the judgment that these are..."
Correct.
"...they're slight tweaks back and forth."
Correct. And that happens all the time. I mean, that happens in any budget season where you might be trading a position for something else if you see a need changes for a student or there's an opportunity to do something different. I think we heard a little bit about some of the cuts from last year, but yes, we didn't hire, we didn't replace a coach that resigned, but we did hire an additional assistant principal who has responsibilities to do some coaching this school year. No, we didn't replace the focus program, but we found that we didn't need that program as it was operating, and were able to reallocate those funds in a different way to support students. So you always have to be mindful of that, that sometimes you make, you may not replace a position, but you may do something else. The middle school has a, we did not replace the .6 PT because we could not find a person that was appropriate for the PT position, but we did hire a physical therapy assistance in order to be able to service the students. So, you know, we did hire those things that we may have said that we didn't fill that position. We didn't fill the humanities position, and we did put more work on the plate of the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning to be able to continue to do the work of the Humanities Director.
So a question for here, for me. So similarly, I think you're probably going to say the same thing, but just to make it clear, where you have three additional teachers or six teaching assistants, right? That's the sort of thing you have to make a judgment call on based on, as you deal... How do you, I guess the question is, how do you determine which of those it would be or what combination you need?
Yeah, it's really big. It is just a delicate and process to do when you're making these cuts. So, and we are following the collective bargaining agreement, so as...
Can we just keep the whispering and talking to a minimum? We're trying to all focus, and I'm sure there's other people in the audience here who would like to be able to hear the information clearly and not miss anything and then wonder why it wasn't commented on when it was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
So when we are making these cuts, you will have to make some determination of whether or not, if you're cutting a program, we're also looking at the directive of not eliminating a program completely. And then it may mean that when we, we could, we may look at a teaching assistant position, depending on where the students are grouped and what makes sense. It is going to be a process that is going to take some time to be able to really, as we make the first layer of cuts and then reassign, because you're following the collective bargaining agreement as well. And so teachers with non-professional teaching status would be teachers that we're looking at first, which may mean some switching and moving around.
Okay, yeah, just wanted...
Yep.
How that's done.
In the elementary, there's the $10,000 reduction from new adoptions. I know Ms. Cormier kind of brought that up, funds for curriculum. I believe the town had picked up some of our curriculum.
Yes.
So what is this, how does that reflect that?
It really will come out of the Assistant Superintendent's... So it's in elementary because that's, it's in elementary because that's the line item where it was originally placed. So all of the curriculum, the curriculum materials that are purchased out of the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning's office, those dollar amounts are spread equally amongst the five, the elementary schools. And then when those curriculum pieces are purchased, it will come from those budgets. But it really is the work that she's doing. So it may mean a reduction in something that we're, you know, we had planned to do that we may not be able to do next year. But where we are fortunate is that we did put in capital improvement this year and in new materials, so materials that will be able to be sustained for five years and that are new materials. So we have literacy materials and math materials that are in the capital improvement budget.
A reduction may look like, sorry, I'm trying to do this without unplugging my computer. A reduction may look like, we may, there may be a situation where we would spend those funds to bring in someone to do some professional development. In order to reduce $10,000, someone in-house may do the professional development instead. Me, one of my coaches, one of my directors instead. That would be one example of how we could reduce. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Lethrop. I know this has not been an easy, easy task that you've been given.
It's not an easy task, and it is going to take time.
If we could just quiet down a little bit, please?
It's going to be a lot of work, and we are dedicated to working with the association to make sure that we're doing this the best way that we can and then understanding what those positions might look like and then articulating to folks what that looks like. I know everyone wants to know exactly what position it is, but because there are certain bumping rights and looking at certain certifications, it takes time, and the last thing I want to do is tell a person they're going to lose their position, and they're not. So until this is really clear and that we're sure that we know exactly what's, where we're bumping, where somebody might be able to bump into, because that does happen, you might cut a position in the high school, but that teacher may be certified to be able to do something someplace else, and they would be able to bump into that position.
Actually, I do have one question, one more question. So if someone is planning to retire, if a teacher's planning to retire, a teaching assistant's planning to retire, or they're going to take another job, when do they need to let us know?
Many of them have already let us know. There is some incentive if they let us know early, and so most do. Any of those who have let us know that it was a potential, we have reached out to them to clarify whether or not they are going to retire or not. We also have teachers who are on, staff members who are on long-term leaves, so they've taken the year off leave. We've reached out to all of them to ask if they'll be returning to their position or if they're planning to resign their position. And so some of these positions are positions due to attrition.
Right, that's where I was going. So like, it may be that you don't need to, I don't have to repeat again how much we all hate this, but...
Right.
Right, but is it possible that some of these numbers might shrink because people...
Not necessarily shrink. So if there's 10 teachers at the high school, there may be two teachers or three teachers that are retiring, that I wouldn't fill those positions, right? But I'm counting them as cut positions, because that's money, that's cut positions.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I think so, so...
The person is not losing their job. They're choosing to retire, but we wouldn't choose to, I wouldn't fill that position.
You would not be replacing them, right? So, okay, so folks should, it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily that we'll have to lay off that many people, because some of them may be moving on anyway.
We may not be laying off that many people, but we would be reducing positions by that many.
That number, just to be clear.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sort of a logical follow-up is roughly, and I understand you wouldn't know for sure, but how many likely departures and retirements occur in a year?
It depends on the year. Some years you have a lot, and some years you don't have as many. We did do that voluntary buyout program last year, where I think that was an incentive for some people to move, to retire, to resign. I'll be honest, we don't... I'll be honest, we don't have a large pool of retirements this year.
Thank you for staying in some of those extra directives we have given you, keeping the class sizes 25 and below, not cutting some of the important program that we, program that we've talked about. So, I know staying within those directives also is, puts that task a little bit higher, but we appreciate you staying within those.
Yes, Trudy, and I will point out, so, I'm just going to use the athletics for a reference. The $20,000 reduction to athletics came off of the level service budget. So, while this is, it's $20,000 cut, is still a very challenging cut, it came off of the correct amount of money that we projected to spend on athletics if we could move forward. So, the budget was much higher than it was for FY, what are we in now, 24, or FY '25. It's much higher because it was an actual line item of the expenses that were needed for athletics. So, the $20,000 came off of that. And I, that's one, and the same thing for Scarlet Night Academy. So, Scarlet Night Academy, I think I've used that as a reference before, has not been budgeted correctly. It doesn't mean that the numbers in the budget book didn't match up to the end. What it mean, what I'm saying is that the amount that we pay for salaries for Scarlet Night Academy and the amount of money that we spend on supplies and materials for Scarlet Night Academy well exceeds the amount of money that was put into those two line items. So now, this 10,000 reduction comes off of the corrected amount that we would need to have run it the way it was, as opposed to the lesser amount, if that makes any sense.
No, no, absolutely, no, absolutely does, yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, let's move on. We have the North Andover High School principal search.
Yes, I included in your packet a timeline for the North Andover High School principal search. You'll see, starting in December, we met with students. January, February, we met with high school staff, sent surveys, surveys to families and to parents. The position is posted and we're actively recruiting at this time. Today, staff and community should have received an email if they're interested in participating in a search committee. So, the staff received, the high school staff received an email if they're interested in being on the search committee and the community received an email as well and students. And the search, which just shows you the timeline of when the committee will be chosen, when the posting closes, March 21st, our plans to interview, choose finalists and hopefully have an announcement by April 17th of our new high school principal. At the bottom, it shows you what the school commit, what the interview committee will be. There'll be three administrators on the committee, four high school faculty, two high school students, two parents or community members and one school committee member.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, and we have now the ABECC testing date.
Yes. Part of kindergarten is to do a screen. It's really a child find screen to make sure that, see if there are any students who perhaps potentially were not part of early intervention and may need some services. So, we screen all of our students before they come into kindergarten. As of last year, we started screening them the two, before school ends and we would like to do that again this year. So, what that means is that kindergarten would end school two days before grades one through 12 would end school to give the teachers and the teaching assistants the opportunity to do the kindergarten screening for our students.
And we can reflect that on the school calendar.
We'll reflect that on the school calendar. We're going to reflect it on the school calendar moving forward, that that will be our plan. So, it will be on the new calendar moving forward. Kindergarten students don't have to have the same days in school as students in grades one through 12, so we're able to do that.
All right, thank you.
And Ms. Goddard, Dr. Goddard will send out an email and a letter to her families letting them know.
Great. Okay, moving on to school committee chair updates. I just wanted to remind everybody of the school committee Hall of Fame nominations. We're always looking for those nominations of a, an educator, somebody who has, who has been in the North Andover Public School, is an educator, who has retired. If you know anybody, there's, it's on the school committee website to be able to make those nominations, so we greatly appreciate those. We always love seeing those come in and being able to reflect on the wonderful educators that North Andover Public School has had and honoring somebody in an exceptional way.
What did they do?
I want to say it was April 30th. All right. The next item is the budget report format. One of the things that we had discussed way back when was to think about how we want finance and budget reported back to us, how to determine that, if we wanted some type of subcommittee or how, how we wanted to go about that process. So, I wanted to open that up to the committee for discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's definitely a key question and something as we go forward, need to make sure that we do correctly. I think now is the time for us to start thinking through, what are the cost centers that we want to track? You know, we now are seeing budgeting reports that are showing actuals and encumbered funds and, you know, the forecast of what's left, but you, how do we want to see that broken out? So, if we start working on that now as a committee, as to what we want that to look like, it seems like now is the time to allow Superintendent Lathrop's team to get that set up so we're able to start tracking that next budget the right way and also making sure that we're meeting our commitments with the memorandum of agreement or understanding with the select board and FINCOM, that we report these out, have one method, use the tools that are available and not, you know, not spending time doing 20 different variations of the budget, of budget reporting, but we have one that holistically meets our needs. So, I mean, I'll be honest, I don't have that answer yet, but I would like to work with, you know, to come up with that. So, we have some, the end work with Superintendent Lathrop's team so that we know what that is.
So, this is something I've talked about a lot and there are certain things that I, I think we need to look at this kind of in a similar way to way, the way operations reviews are held in companies, right? Where you kind of see every month how you're tracking. That's a really important thing, I feel. Also, you know, this is my bailiwick or my thing I always talk about, but one of the things that's difficult for us as school committee members to follow is the whole grant scenario and how that plays in. And so, I can't help it, I just think of it as like, I'd like to see sources of funds, uses of funds, right? And it's everything though, so we get the whole picture. Because right now, it's hard to follow. We have our operations budget, but then there are these grants and I'm not, I'm always confused about how those grants play into what we need to spend on an operational basis. And I understand that they're, and I think this is part of what the challenge is, right? They're often one-time things and you can't count on them. And that's part of our, the audit report told us that, we'd be careful about depending on one-time things. That said, they still matter, right? And in order to track, and where I'm going with this is when we get these bi-weekly warrant reports that show us where we are, sort of, right? It's very hard for me to not be alarmed, right, when I see a negative number there. But most of the time, when I dig into that, I find out it's, well, it's all stuff we know about. It's, you know, one very minute sub-budget number in a big, you know what I mean? It's very hard to track what that really means, right? So, when I see a line item, for instance, for transportation and it says there's minus 100,000 left, I go, oh, that's not good, right? But what I would, would be more helpful would be if it were summarized for me in a way that said, this is our overall transportation budget and this is where we really are, not whether NRT company number 17 is a little overspent versus company 15 is a little underspent. You know what I mean? So, that's part of my feedback and I would definitely volunteer to work on putting together, you know, with admin staff, a way to do that. I've been an operations person at bigger companies and I know, kind of know how that goes and I recognize, I mean, just finance is different and I've learned a lot about it in the last 18 months. But I do think we have to find a better way to report out. And we're getting better, but I think it's still, it's still, it's still a little confusing.
And it's, it's not just even about, the report out is kind of the evidence of it, but for us to decide, how do we want to see the cost centers? Like, what is it that we need to track to so that we can tell, as an entire team, when are things potentially deviating from plan and being able to see that, you know, Superintendent Lathrop is giving us that information and, you know, we can see it at the right level of detail, not at the warrant, the warrant with, you know, a thousand records, right? The detail is great, but you need to be able to see, you know, the so what too. And I think the other key part, once we settle on that, is also, how do we keep, kind of codify some of this as the best practice or policy for the school committee so that these practices stay in place year after year? Yes, improve where you can and then things might change, but that we don't end up where we were. So, I think that's the other part of this. Let's get it right. Now, we might need to make some changes, but make sure that we do the right thing for the school committee and the schools five to 10, five, 10 years from now as well.
So, I wanted to suggest that there are a couple of different dimensions. One is the aggregate that Mr. Brown said about total spending, but another is what Ms. Cormier just said, is within, you want to figure out how to divide it. We don't really want a situation where the school department, the committee makes a budget of whatever amount and then it's just, the superintendent spends it and we never see any detail on it. And then the question is going back and forth. So, there's a couple of considerations. One is it's a management tool. You really want a situation, I think, where the budget is divided according to who was responsible for it so that every single section should have one person who knows that it's his or her job to make sure, to make decisions within that and also to make sure that at the end of the year, that's how much gets spent. And then there's a kind of a policy question. Well, there's also, in general, I think all else, like, obviously, a principal would be a person who makes the decisions about her school. On the one hand, generally speaking, we don't want to micromanage. We don't really care if the principal buys, you know, paper or books. Well, books may be a little different. But, but there are some, my view, some expenditure which is an investment, like when you buy a new curriculum, when you train teachers. And to me, I think you, I would want that identified separately so that, you know, we have some broad understanding of how much we're going to invest and if, if there's going to be a change, then the person responsible first has to ask the superintendent and then she has to ask us. And you want to set a balance. You certainly don't want to approve every single transfer at the department, but you don't want to have no approvals either.
So, I guess my thought is, you know, I definitely want to see some work with the administration because like, like Mr. Moskowitz said, we don't want to micromanage, but we want to be able to understand it in a way that we can follow and know when maybe something might go awry or whether everything's staying in line. So, I mean, there's the option of doing a subcommittee, which we could put something together temporarily. I don't know if we need to go into that depth if we want to talk about maybe some liaison positions that will work with administration until we have a system and then, once that system is placed, we can eliminate those positions.
So, ideally, and actually it's in our policies, at some point, there should be a vote. The superintendent, either having worked with one or two of us or not, should make, there should be a specific recommendation about, here are the, whatever you want to call them, the divisions of the budget and here are the broad rules about who can approve transfers and so on. And then we need to vote on that and it actually says that in our policies.
Well, no, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm saying, being able to put that in place and bring it before the school committee, we don't need, we don't need five hands in this. I don't, I think that's too much, but having one or two...
Did you mean 10 actually?
Yeah, one or two people into, yeah, 10 hands, into working with administration, finding a good system and bringing it back to the committee and say, hey, how does this look? Do we need to adjust this? And then taking, taking it back.
Do we need anyone else's, do we need to hear from any of the other boards on this? Because it's that kind of, because it sounds like there's a couple of different ways we can do this. You said liaisons, maybe like two people, could be liaisons, that's sort of, just the school committee do, and I'm truly asking this question. Do, because that's the only reason I could see where we, if we wanted FINCOM opinion as we were doing this, that maybe a subcommittee or something would be useful, but that I'm truly asking that question. Because if not, that a liaison seems like the right way just to get it done.
So, I mean, my, my opinion would be, I think a liaison is perfect. It, this is really us, you know, as a school committee wanting to, wanting to be better board members, right? And I completely agree, I don't like, believe me, I don't want to micromanage the school budget, but I want to be a responsible board member and be able to interpret the data that comes to me in a meaningful way and help, you know, and be productive. And right now, it's gotten better, but it's still, it's still too much, right? Like, the warrant reports are not what we need, right? I mean, we need to see those, but they don't really tell the story.
They tell one story.
Right.
And they don't tell another. The story they do tell, they tell rather well. I mean, the story that the other committees need to worry about as well as we do, right? Are we broadly on track?
Sure.
It's a really important story and what we're doing now is a whole lot better than what was before. But how it's divided hasn't really, we haven't really discussed that at all and that's really more us than the other committees.
Yeah, I see it that way too. Yeah, I think it's us.
Yeah, we just talked about liaisons, that's the easy, get moving, right? Because time is of the essence, it seems like now, and I'm making an assumption Superintendent Lathrop, that now is the time for any kind of direction or kind of working through this, right?
Yeah, I'd definitely like to get your input on this.
Yeah, okay, great. So, there's a lot of things that have been said about this and I think you're, we're sort of mixed up a couple of things, right? So, obviously, if we were proposing new curriculum for the district, we would follow the protocol in terms of how we pilot curriculum in the district. There would be then a recommendation from that piloting committee. Ultimately, the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning would make a recommendation to me and I would make a recommendation to school committee. We'd have presentations and we'd keep you appressed of that. So, I think that's a little, I've heard that, so I just wanted to put that out. Warrants are a responsibility of the school committee to sign off on the warrant, so, and that is, you know, sort of that reporting piece. I also want to just remind us and anybody listening that we have been absent of a financial director for a large portion of this academic year. And while I've had lots of opportunities to work in school budgets and I understand school budgeting process, I am not a, that's finance, I don't have a degree in finance, I have a degree in education. And so, our budgeting has been largely supported by the town this year and trying to find a way that makes sense to be able to report to all of you. I'm thrilled that we were able to bring Gail Dowd and Tracy, I'm going to say her name wrong, Michaela, is terrific and I think as a team, they are working really well together. I think evidence of the fact that they were able to produce a level service budget and be able to meet with everybody to really understand where, where we are spending our money, whether or not it's been, that's how we want to continue spending our money, but that's where we've been spending our money. Now, Mos is just going to remind you briefly that Gail is still working with us in a consultancy form. We need to move forward with hiring that position, but she comes with a wealth of experience. She was a CFO, that is her background. She is an accountant. She is a certified business administrator with Department of Education. I think that she is going to bring so many things to this board and have an opportunity to, like, even she would want to share differently with all of you and to be able to answer your questions. So, I just want to make sure that we all understand that we are, but I think to your point, Ms. Cormier, that we are at the right point now as you're moving into a new budget season and we have someone to really narrow down what that's going to look like, what the reporting to the school committee is going to look like. And then, long, you know, not long-term, but then we have to start thinking about, what does a budget season truly look like? To somebody's point, right? A budget season should look like where costs, where these program centers have an opportunity to come to school committee and say, as the, as a principal, right, that was an opportunity that I always had in my positions, for me to come before the board or a subcommittee of the board and say, as the principal of X school, I believe that I need to have this in order to make my school run... believe that I need to have this in order to make my school run more effectively. Sometimes I had the opportunity to say, I believe that I have too much of this, and I could, it's cost neutral, but we want to hear from our, our principal leaders, we want to hear from our athletic director, what does, what do they need in order to run their programs? So we also have to think about what a budget season truly should look like, where each of these people have an opportunity to come to the board, present what they're looking for, make some determinations, and what that budget season looks like. So, long-winded, I wholeheartedly agree with you, that we need a budget system that makes sense, that we are going to follow, that everybody can understand, I don't think you need input from select board or finance, and I think that they have actually helped fine-tune a little bit some of the things, but we do, are still in this memorandum of understanding, that's something we agreed when the town supported us last year, to continue to report to them, and I do send them a monthly report.
So my, my question is, and you work with Ms. Dowd closely, is, is this a time to be able to approach her with this, or is this, or is this something that we should maybe wait a couple of months to be able to really dive into?
I think that you could start to have an initial conversation, I, you know, I just want to say, we are doing this really challenging process of making these cuts and making sure it makes sense, but I think that it makes perfect sense to have an initial conversation with her, and have her start thinking about what she might be able to present to you, and give you some options if they, see if things make sense.
So, I mean, at this point, I mean, if, if Mr. Brown and Ms. Cormier would like to meet with Ms. Dowd, and start to talk about that process, that would be appreciated?
I am very interested in doing it, but I would also defer to Mr. Moskowitz, based on your experience with education budgeting, too, I would, I would, I don't need to be the one to come up with it, I know you, you've got, obviously, that, that's what you do, and have done for the state, so I would defer.
Does it have, I mean, could, if, if we don't all do it at once?
I don't want too many hands. Thank you. I think that could be cumbersome, I think it makes sense if there's two people, and that's your sort of liaisons, to get a sense to start, to start the conversation, so that she starts to have a direction of, you know, because eventually, the goal would be that when we come to school committee, the finance director will be making these reports to the, to the board.
This would be a temporary thing, yeah.
Yes, but I think to give a direction of, and, you know, I really hope that Ms. Dowd is interested in working with us full-time, I'll say that out loud, but we have to follow that process, and to be able to do that.
So, Mr. Moskowitz?
Yeah, I would.
So then, if you two could, could meet with her?
Sure.
Start that conversation, and then report back to the school committee on where we are on that, that would be appreciated.
Are you comfortable with me letting Ms. Dowd and Tracy, Gail and Tracy know this, and have Michelle be the conduit for starting to set that up, so, so that they're not inundated with like, an email of, and...
I think that would be the best process.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, great.
Appreciate that, by the way, you know, I've been kind of on this drumbeat for a while, but, so I, I don't, I think I bring something to also corporate experience, I grant that I now understand the difference very well, between municipal and corporate finance, but I think, I appreciate that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so let's move on to our school building committee updates, we do not have Mr. Hicks here for a middle school update, Ms. Lathir, did you have anything you'd like to add?
I did go to the last meeting, we are just wrapping up, there are a few things that are happening at the middle school, there, they have, we've had some issues with our elevator, I'm not sure if that, honestly, I'll be honest, if that's due to new construction, but they are working on that, but things are moving along.
Thank you, and our Kittredge Elementary School update.
All right, Kittredge, so we, we did meet Tuesday, right, it was Tuesday, right?
It was.
Yeah, two days ago, things are progressing well with the new options, the build from, build on a clean site is the word they use, so there are three new options that we discussed at length as a committee, there's a community survey that Superintendent Lathir put out, talked about earlier, that's out there, I really encourage everybody to weigh in on that, all of the building committee members have been asked to rank kind of the options there, and, and that's happening right now, like, this week, so we're, we want to get the surveys back and analyzed by Mar, by March 25th, on that date, the subcommittee's going to meet to select the preferred alternative of the, of the ones presented, that goes then on to the, the mass, the PSR draft goes to the SBC, hopefully they approve by April, well, they're supposed to approve by April 15th, submission, the final PSR preliminary schematic reviews, what that stands for, is submitted to MSBA on May 1st, their meeting to approve it would be either May 14th or May 21st, and then we go into the next, really start the design phase at that point, and then, of course, as everybody's heard before, the, the decision on funding mechanisms would come at the following town meeting, so May of 2026, which is where the town will be asking its citizens to approve borrowing money in order to do that. Really, that's, that's it, please, please, please respond to that survey, right? I mean, honestly, there, well, two, in my opinion, two of the three options are pretty good, one of them I don't particularly like, but even that one would, would do the job, but, but there's some good options out there for us, and that a lot of community use, too, would be possible in this new building, it'd be open to the community, it'd be usable by the community at night, subject to proper approvals and all that stuff, but it, it will be a wonderful facility, and the best part is the state's going to pay 40% of it, so, assuming we do everything correctly, right? That's it.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move in, we have a presentation by Ms. Ando.
Sure. Short presentation, but we've been working with our school leaders, with our different associations, teachers association, we've been working on our early release schedule for next year, so this is just for your information, in meetings, we have had some questions about early release days, and so for the last three years, we've had 18 early release days with the times that are listed in your packet, what we're thinking about, and again, nothing's final, with the things we're thinking about with all our stakeholders, are reducing those to 10 early release days with earlier dismissal times, so that we would have some more time with the staff in order to do professional development, but we wouldn't put the burden of 18 early release days on families. So, this is something we are working on as a community, and we just wanted to share it with you, so that you could be aware of what was going on.
Thank you, any questions for Ms. Ando?
I do have a selfish question.
Will Kids Stop start earlier on the early release days?
Yeah, we've already been in touch, and that is, they can accommodate that. They can accommodate.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Ando. Oh, sorry, one more?
I do have one. Okay. So in terms of, like, what kind of feedback, or have you, have you gotten on this, is, because I, I mean, I like the, personally, I like the idea of kind of having the longer professional development, like, you're doing, you can have a chance to kind of dig in, and, you know, cover, cover a more substantial topic, is that the general sentiment, as you're talking about this with people, is there different feedback, or?
There's different feedback, and there's no perfect way to do it, and there's no perfect way to get all of our staff, TAs, teachers, everybody together, in a way that lines up with all of our collective bargaining agreements, we feel like it's a, it's a good, it's a decent compromise, where we're having a little bit more time with our teachers, but not putting as much strain on families, and so, so yes, there's been mixed feedback, but overall, we feel like there's no perfect way to do it, and this may be, we'd love to give it, we think we might want to give it a try, and see how it goes.
Are you, one more question, are you thinking about changing the day of the week, or is it going to stay Wednesday, or don't you know yet?
We haven't thought about changing the week, other communities do it on different days, but we're thinking of staying to Wednesday for now.
I will say, when I had the position that Ms. Ando had, that was one of the things I heard a lot from parents, and from the community, that they felt as though the, the early release times, there were too many of them, and it was challenging to have those early, to have so many early release, and, and I think that the staff, I mean, we have shared it briefly with them, with our unions, sometimes don't always find the days to be the most effective use, if you only have an hour or two hours, and what that might look like, so it's, and, and, I don't know, when I visit schools on the days that it's early release day, and every time I go in the school, the kids, like, the first thing I hear is, it's Wacky Wednesday, it's the Wacky Wednesday schedule, and, and teachers will be quick to point out, like, oh, I'm not doing this, what I would typically do now, because it's Wacky Wednesday, and they have to go, and, and to me, one of the things was, I'm like, I'm not really sure that this is the best use of instructional time, you know, we're sort of jumbling up the, the schedule on those days, kids don't necessarily see it as, as educational, Wacky Wednesday's fun, but I'm, and I'm not saying that education's not happening, it's absolutely happening, but I just, we've kind of started to think that maybe this is, there's something better that we can do.
Any other questions or comments?
Just experiencing it now for the first time, in, in another district, I, I do like the, this is the plan that Andover uses, it's a, it's a much shorter day, but there are fewer of them, and I think it's a win-win, I mean, it's better for me as an instructor, and I think, like you said, it's better for families, I mean, I, we always, we used to shake our heads going, you know, another early release day, are you kidding me? So, yeah, I, I think it'll be good.
As you know, they're not on the calendar that you approved yet, Ms. Ando and her team are working on that right now, and so we'll be able to bring back the calendar, because we know that families, the sooner they get those dates, the better.
All right, thank you. Okay, so our next meeting is going to be March 30th, it is going to be here at the Senior Center, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move, Madam Chair, that we adjourn this meeting.
A second.
All right, Mr. Moskowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.